As we sit, it's my understanding that this is the eightieth anniversary of the liberation of Auschwitz. And so I would ask for just a few seconds of quiet reflection and silence. Thank you very much.
All right, so we will go ahead and open with our conference. Does anyone need to respond to that? Has anything that you would like to come up to the podium and say? All right, so we will move on with item 184, consideration of a property abatement application.
I move that we grant the abatement for tax years 22, 23 pursuant to Title 36 MRSA RMRs, Section 841-2 in case of number 2024-20.
Second.
I'm sorry, hold on, we've got to change here. 20 in the case of number 2025-01.
Second.
Do you have a motion? Is it on there? On there, there you go. All right, item 00, item 00, item 00, consideration of American Legion Mobile Servant Services, including street lamp banners on U Street. And I know we have a couple of members in the audience discuss the packet that we did receive here. Drive my left off into the presence.
We can accommodate that. One second.
Very short. Bill Tower Point, Bill, is here. Are you Valerian?
I am, I'm Valerian. You're welcome. Thank you.
Thanks.
Eat something.
Maybe not.
Eat something. Sure.
I mean, we should always meet us. And we see that.
I think some species. But you can't have a part of my wife's kind of that sort of.
At Longfellow's.
Really?
Yeah, my, actually, it's a, it was my sister-in-law gave it to me for Christmas.
Really?
I love it because it's got everything in like shut this. Then it's got, you just literally keep everything like your, all your credit cards, everything. Perfect. So it's perfect.
I do feel like they go after their honeymoon that.
No, that's all right.
Maybe not. They have to give you if you kind of come in a pile of furniture, you don't know what happened once that.
Yep.
Gosh, not good.
Everybody's watching.
Yeah, that's usually when it messes up.
That's what.
You got an IT person over there. We have our personal IT person.
Oh. A Wi-Fi?
Yes, ma'am, it's the guest. The guest. And then.
Hmm.
Yeah. If you.
I'm just wondering about your style. Okay. Nice. Good job.
You have something there. I'm great, man. This is very easy, I'll help, sir.
Yeah.
Today?
No.
I don't know if you can be no sense. I hope that ours could use a little more. When's the issues? That's it, of course.
Oh, yeah, I believe this because it's directed. Please pull it up.
There we go. Wait, what? Are we downloading?
Yeah.
Well, maybe not.
I think you do, you go to the open Google site.
Oh, oh, yeah, you're right.
I think you give you a presentation.
Yeah.
Sure. I think you need an app once.
Yeah.
Out. Long, long view.
You can just scroll down to that.
We've got.
That's fine.
Yeah, okay, but let me, uh, let me, let me share my screen here real quick so our Zoom audience can see as well. Uh, just one. All right.
Oh, ma'am, if you'll speak into the mic, please.
I'm Valerian Kavera. I am the historian at the American Legion of Osbornia in Winthrop. And I'm sure everybody's been to Booth Bay Harbor and seen all the hometown hero flags. Well, we would like to start that in our town. And so, right now, we have a team of three at the Legion that is, I'm trying to get this executed, but obviously, we can't go anywhere until we get town approval. So if you click.
I'm script.
Yeah, that is it. So our hometown hero banner's goal is to honor the past and present members of armed forces, first responders, such as, our namesake is Alfred W. Maxwell Jr. and Don Woody Hamlin, which you guys have on your, on your wall here, and by placing banners along Main Street. This, this basically is what it will look like. We currently have a flag on the poles. I'm not sure how many, some are review, I mean, thirty, some are review that. But our goal is to hang hometown hero banners on the opposite side of the flags, hopefully on both sides of the street. Because they, um, the banners are printed both sides, so whichever way you're coming, you can see it. Um, they're considered a hometown hero to the town's people. If, if they are considered, they will be considered a banner of charity. So whoever puts in an application and thinks they're above the line is a hometown hero. You know, we will take that application and we will submit it and consider it to have a banner. So we're not like strictly military. Uh, we are the military. Obviously, we will be doing the military, so.
But this, this is a, you're, you're honoring people that are from the town?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So a hometown hero can be, they don't have to be born in the town?
That's what I was gonna say. They're not born or lived.
No. Um, so like I've been here since twenty, 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 twenty twenty, yes. Um, if someone thought I was a hometown hero for whatever reason, they could, they could, it's, you know, that's a criteria, criteria that we um, plan to do. Obviously, we're not in that step yet, but basically, it's going to start out military and first responders. So the entire process could take up to two years. Depending on obviously how long it takes to get honorary applications, depending on the amount of time it takes to register funding, and depending on whether we wait to do them all at once or individual completion. Obviously, based on funding, how many flags you get, like if I only get funding for one, we might go ahead and just put up the one to start. If that makes sense. And speaking of funding, um, the Legion, our first contribution is obviously going to be to honor Alfred W. Maxwell Jr. Um, and then we plan to, so it's donations from towns, businesses, um, honoraries who want to sponsor a family member, and of course, fundraisers.
Let me spread it, I have a question.
Okay, so. Um, the committee requests permission from the Winthrop Town Council to hang hometown hero banners alongside the American flags donations.
Will you be leaving the flags up your own?
So the flags are, the lifespan of a flag itself is three years in our foot. Our goal, depending on how many we get, you know, and we have forty bowls, forty applications, forty flags, then we'll keep them up until they need to come down like an American flag. And then that flag will be donated back to the, a family member or whatever.
I guess that might, might answer my question a little bit, this. How are you going to handle, say you got forty bowls, I had on what, yeah, just say you have, let's say, number, start with, and you have sixty applicants. How are you going to handle that situation? You got a lottery or?
So our plan is with that option, because we have discussed that one, we would probably hang the flags up for a year and then retire them and give them back to the family member and then put up the next.
Okay, um, just say again, I've been out of Booth Bay and seen banners written down there and again, and I looked at it, said that's awesome idea, so I'd like to, to propose to the council and thank you.
Uh, what kind of cost do you think, uh, is, are you, just, I guess they talk to the, to a supporter, a family, a business. Uh, what would be the cost to have a flag up? Is it just the eighty-four plus?
I, um, you know, so you pull up the, because I have a cost analysis, I just don't know that.
Yeah, I, I, I saw it in there. I just wanted that's gonna be the cost to the.
So that is a, uh, today, that is probably what it would cost to have one flag up, basically. Um, and, and again, it's going to be donations, you know, whether it comes from the family, whether it comes from businesses, however we get those donations. As we give an application, an application is through funding, fan, plan.
Yeah.
So, but how fast that's gonna take is obviously dependent on the funding process.
Now, who verifies the applicant as far as timing service, discharge status, any of that, is that included for, for the Legion?
Um, so since we're initiating the program, we'll probably start that. Um, we have a application that we are developing, it's not gonna be DD two fourteen, most people are gonna have their DD two fourteens, all that information is on there, as far as the military goes. Um, as far as like a first responder, that's just basically gonna be the information that the family gives or say the fire department would give us.
Question in the audience?
I'm Jean Green, according with the commissar, if there's an overdue or not enough, uh, flag holes, I'm willing to do something by building, in the future, if.
Thank you so much, gentlemen.
So I did get one letter, uh, in the, my email, just, um, from a resident expressing some concern uh, about the flags honoring folks over others and the towns in the street last, uh, for things like currently as the scarecrow contest, the flower power, and the seasonal lights. Um, so with that, would there be any consideration for doing it, putting up those flags, say, for a month period? Um, maybe for the month of May, like military appreciation or?
So, I mean, I feel like they're high enough upon the polls that they're not gonna affect the scarecrows or anything like that, the Christmas decorations, I mean, all the other towns to me. And obviously, that is something, if we're going to invest in them, I feel like it's a big investment for one food. Just my opinion.
But, well, I mean.
Other towns, I mean, other events or scarecrows and things, I mean, flower power, they invested in that as well.
Well, the thing is, is, um, I wouldn't do one month, but maybe, when, when do those, obviously, that's Halloween.
October?
Yeah, for the, the scarecrows, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And what's the, the flower power?
That's in the summer. I'm sure which one, that was new this year. And then we do the snowflake lights around the holidays. And then can't think of that.
I mean, um, I, I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of it, but I do understand the concern that you load up these, these you load them up and you're gonna have, you know, flags, flowers, everything else. Um, so, um, I don't know, is it, I, I, one month sounds really just not that long. Um, would it be more? I mean, would it make sense to do, you know, multiple months or something? I don't know. I mean, what do you guys think? I, I just think maybe I can see, I can see where there's like, uh, you know, a multiple things going on in one.
Yeah.
So, so typically, the, the flags go up on the poles, uh, before Labor Day and then stay there, I think through, uh, you're right, before Memorial Day through Veterans Day is when they come down. And then when they come down, then the, the snowflake lights typically go up for the holidays.
These would go, these could potentially be taken down at the same time as the flags, correct?
I think.
Yeah, it's like May.
That, I mean, that would make sense. If you take the American flags down at that time, take those down.
So what, what's the timing?
May, uh.
November.
November, early November.
I don't know, like, remember, she didn't, right? I don't think that's gonna impact, or the scarecrows would have been that, these, these would have been, that scarecrows might just try to flex you. And I'm just trying to picture the flower power. I don't believe they would impact that either. I feel like that on lower, but these are gonna be, uh, I've never seen them again in Booth Bay, and there's so much work shown in pictures. They're really high.
They're twelve, fourteen, you know, so.
I'm going to say, um, I'll ask the fireman here, how high up do you think those flags?
Well, it should be fifteen, twenty feet over the ground.
Oh, really?
Yes, I think, they, 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 they're not open to share. They're too busy or too gaudy, I don't know, but I mean, I, I think this just in the end, because I think.
Oh, that's different than if they're that high up. I wasn't aware if they were gonna hang up.
They do be shared. And I, I think like the idea being, you know, you know, through the month of May, obviously, sure, I like how we did that yesterday, because I think that's.
Yeah, well, you could even do, yeah, that's fine.
Would you be the, uh, like the, the forty-eight inch tall ones, that's the, the traditional? Well, is that what you guys are looking at?
I guess, um, that's pretty much everybody's going, um, I don't know if you need anything.
No, I was just saying, four, I mean, it's four feet versus five, because it's really, but, you know, the four foot would give you, you know, it would be less encompassing the bottom of the bowl or the decoration.
Yeah, I, I think one thing to remember is putting these up and installing them and then installing it is a little bit more work than just hooking a flag in a flag holder. Okay, this looks like about four hose plants and some brackets. Pardon me, everything's gotta be straight, stretched properly. Um, you know, I, I think, you know, the, um, right from Memorial Day till the end of the beast. Um, and they're high enough to stay out of the way of everything else.
Do I understand this correctly, brackets stay, right?
Yes, I mean, it's, unless you wanted to take them down, but they're aluminum, I think aluminum brackets, so.
I wouldn't see any reconnection to that. Yeah, we got our, our, something really fun, yeah. Like, is it seven seniors, you know, that's all, you know.
Well, you know, it's, I don't want to get the, uh, you know, the flower people mad at me, but there's also a matter of precedence and importance here. I think I look towards our military veterans, usually have some priority over flower power.
And I don't even think it'd be a conflict at all.
You know, I hope not, you know, we should all be able to use the same bowl.
And obviously, as, as we go through, that's something we can do. Is there a way, you know, you say, hey, these days, can we take them down this day, you know what I mean? But to take them up and down, I think everyone spends a lot.
Can I make a motion?
Yeah, of course.
Can I, I'd like to make a motion to approve the, uh, program from say, just before Memorial Day to after Veterans Day.
Second.
Right until after Veterans Day.
It's a day on the.
So, uh, yeah, so, so maybe to Andy's point, maybe making it a little bit clear, why don't we say like, May fifteenth?
Yeah.
To, uh, to November fifteenth, because, because Veterans Day is always on, uh, the eleventh.
November eleventh.
Fifteenth, fifteenth.
Yeah, the question is, are we being asked for a donation here?
No.
So I'm raising. Okay, so there was a motion and a second, uh, any discussion?
How many are you reverbing on? So, well, forty's what I brought up, but I don't know how many bowls are down there, so.
We'll be there.
Are we limiting?
No.
Okay, great.
Not, not mine.
Yeah.
Probably sufficient to say you can use all the town's light bulbs.
And if we run out of light bulbs, Jean has, uh, offer a giant billboard down there.
May fifty to November fifty, or excuse me, yeah, May fifty to November fifty, uh, on all them light bulbs. All right, we have a motion, a second, all in favor? All in my favor. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Item zero, zero nine, section of possible ordinances regarding the following. And so the person we have is preventing the discharge of water on the three-year sidewalks. And we were given an example of an ordinance excerpt from Monmouth of just outlining, uh, drainage and discharge on streets and sidewalk prohibited. And then also the enforcement penalties for that. Is there any discussion through council?
Yeah, and so, my purpose of bringing this to you, uh, you know, Andy made a good point a couple of meetings ago about having this be a workshop. And so I wanted to present this to you, see if you support this idea. If you have any concerns about the language, I mean, it's only a paragraph or two. And if, uh, if you folks are supportive of it, then what we will do is submit some language to the, uh, town's attorney and then bring it back to you and start the process with the, uh, public hearings of incorporating this into our traffic and parking control ordinance.
I'm okay.
I'm okay.
I'm, I'm okay. But I'm questioning whether we even have to send it to the planning board. If we get a solid ordinance, we can just have a public hearing.
Oh, I, I don't think it needs to go to the planning board at all.
I very much support. Second, all the, this is how it's.
Well, and we're gonna get to that in a second, so, so. Oh, no, not at all. No, we just don't want to discharge either onto streets or sidewalks. Uh, and one of the things I want to talk to the town's attorney about this, that's not in the Monmouth ordinance, is it doesn't state in their ordinance that, you know, that, that discharge or that draining is intentional. And I think it needs to be, you know, something to the effect of it's intentional and negligent.
Yeah.
As opposed to, you know, just like a little trickle coming off of someone's property.
Yeah.
So will we see an update?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. So we will do that at the first reading, and if you guys are happy with that at the first reading, you could approve it and then waive the second reading, or you could say, no, we'd like to see these changes made and then we'll bring it back for a second reading.
Um, at various points in history, as, as it were, uh, I know that, uh, the Windsor Border District had problems with people discharging their sun pumps into the sewer system. Um, and I'm just hoping that this, you know, doesn't create another problem. You know, or perhaps we could just make a habit of alerting, you know, they're not gonna do it if they're on septic, but if they're on the public sewer, you know, because they measure your sewer usage by how much water you use. So if you put a sun pump in a sewer, but no one's ever gonna know. Uh, we might just alert, uh, Windsor Border District if we've had to enforce this ordinance on someone that's on public sewer. Just keep that in mind.
All right, so the next one in turn. This is housing laws and battery laws. And there were two updates, uh, made under Article five, section five point one B, and I'm going to go check, check in six point B for our basic necessities.
I agree with this.
I agree as well.
I'm just codifying what we've already made clear to the recovery office via form that we presented them and that they signed. So our attorney just felt like it would be a little stronger if it was part of the ordinance as opposed to not. Okay, so what we'll do then is the next meeting, we'll bring this for the first public hearing on this. Well, I checked that. We probably don't have enough time until the next meeting, since that's next week. Uh, because we gotta do, uh, meet all the notice requirements, but I'll work with, uh, with Deb Nichols to, to do as soon as we can.
Thank you. We'll move on to item ten, the section of updates to chapters seven through number of the town personnel policy. And that includes chapter seven, disciplinary action, grievance procedure, chapter eight, conduct of employees, and chapter nine, endangerment of victims. So there were different, um, updates to that. Any discussion from the council?
Um, the working remotely thing, I mean, how many people are gonna be taking advantage of that?
Yeah, so, so let me.
Again.
Yeah, so let me just point all you guys to that. It's in, uh, chapter eight, section nine, uh, work from home. And so what we've proposed here is that, uh, uh, employees would have to receive advance approvals from the town manager to work from their homes on certain days, provided that their work can be accomplished remotely. I mean, obviously, there are some jobs, let's say plow driver, police officer, where that's not a possibility. And working from home shall be limited to no more than the equivalent of two days per week, whether that's sixteen hours for a full-time job or eight hours for a, for a half-time job. And our library director, yeah, our screen up there is frozen at the moment, but our library director actually made, um, a really good point in that the staff that leads the book clubs there actually have to read as part of their job. And so would they often just send them home so that they're not distracted by goings-on in the library and, and just delve into a, uh, into a novel? So that's what we're proposing at the, at the moment. Obviously, not everyone can do their, their job from home. And we want to limit that as much, we want to be a little flexible, but limited as much as we can, just to ensure that people are accessible by the public.
Yeah, that was top one of these, but you and I did discuss the other day about maybe promoting hours changes.
Mm-hmm.
And how would that affect that, if that does move forward?
Uh, so let's just say, first of all, we don't have to worry about your town manager working from home too much. You're not, that's not what you're pointing at, is it, John?
Potentially, okay. No, it, it's generally, it's, when we're talking about eight-hour days or you talk sixteen hours for a full-time employee, but I consider that like a two days, so it's gonna have to do eight hours, right?
Yeah, so, so, uh, so if someone's working from home, let's say, or a town planner, I would want Friday to be one of the days that she's working from home. Does that answer your question?
That answers my question, you're correct. No, I mean, I'm fully, I'm not, and I'm glad you skipped the concept. I'm not sure I'm completely on board with working from home. I just think there's a lot, there's a lot of value for the employee. I see that. I don't know that there's a lot of value for the community, whereas see in, in Indiana, is, is, is a part of being a team, be part of the group, and part of being available to, to the community and running those roles. So me as a community member, or anybody out here as a community member, that needs to come in and see that person and expecting him to be in the office, playing that role, and expecting to be here at the office, the office, so, but, so that's kind of my stance on us.
Yeah, and I, I don't understand that perfectly well. Um, I will say, on the rare occasion where we may have had like a snow day or, or the town manager's been under the weather, sometimes I, I, I prefer to be in the office, but I also say I'm pretty productive at home, simply because I'm not being bombarded with people popping into my office and.
Scared. Scared. Such as that case, you know, say, are you ready to meet in your way dropping back to you just mentioned every day? We're not talking about two scheduled days uh, working from home consistently.
Um, actually, that's how I was viewing it. I mean, and and maybe and maybe not. And maybe not on a consistent basis, but I I do think that. There ought to be some flexibility and, uh, you know, I know that you guys don't agree with that, but there is now, you know, a movement toward being more flexible with with work schedules. You know, I think this falls into.
I I think I think it's. I'm okay with if you, once in a while, you say to somebody that, you know, geez, you know, if they're. You know.
You got a doctor's appointment, Andy.
It makes more sense for me to work from home. I don't like the two days a week, and I'll tell you why. A lot of people are moving back to in-office. They're not moving. A lot more people are moving back to the office than they are working from home. And, you know. Um. I can tell you right now, I don't know, um. You know. Are are state employees still working from home?
At least some of them.
Yes.
The movement's heading in that direction.
I mean, I mean, not, there there are employees, state employees who still work from home. To some extent.
Yeah.
I I know one of one of our employees has a spouse who's employed by the state and uh, he works from home two days a week.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not in favor of two days a week. Once in a while, if you make a, if you make an exception, I don't have a problem with that. But I I do have a problem with two days a week for.
I kind of change.
I think people are just moving back to the other, you know.
I agree. Yeah, we have. Second. Tuesday, Wednesday is at least half the time.
Zach, uh, one big, one thing I would say is, uh, in your job, like, you're doing that, are you, you're not customer service, right?
No, 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 that's what I, what I was suggesting is we could, you know, we went to like one day, like a week, like that could flow. And then you had, okay, Monday, one, Monday, Tuesday, one, say you have a meeting in the office.
One other piece of that I want to ask, but do you have a way to track the work, the progress that you're making? On those days, are you logged in and watching activity on your?
No, it's ours, it's that matter, but I have to bill average for projects and then, you know, if our budgets go over, then it's clear and something. And so, uh, or up here.
Yeah, see, that's the thing, it's, you know.
An accountability measure in place.
Yeah, but uh, to to be fair, though, those, that sort of thing can be gained, uh, because I know with the state, um. They don't want you, if you're working from home, they don't want you uh, starting before five thirty AM, so some people. Turn their computer on at five thirty and then go go have their morning coffee.
Any of it could gain.
This is, this is, this is true, but uh.
I think it's about that, and I'm not accusing anybody of gaining any.
Yes.
Any of the systems can be gained.
Well.
Anything can be.
And and as I've said before. If you're a manager who's paying attention, you know who's being, who's getting their work done.
Yeah, this is not really a, Jeff, and you again to the point, I think you, well, I guess, as I said, sometimes think of. Teamwork camaraderie, uh, you know, having an office, everybody having access to each other, uh, talking with each other. I think it's a good thing, right? I manage a team and work at my work and. When I don't have access to somebody, they don't have access to the electronic, especially based on base, I think base time means a lot, I mean. I I I would consider maybe one day, kind of just, you know, direct talks to see how that feels, to see how that gauges. But I definitely wouldn't want anything to talk about something like, yeah, don't want to get ahead of myself, we're talking about saving some extended hours. I wouldn't want it to be that day.
Oh, no, I agree with you there.
So I think Jimmy held good points. Another thing I'd like to bring up is that, I mean, how much are you concerned, Andy, with? Uh, you know, well, you you know, you let my coworker work at home two days last week, so now you have to let me work two days.
No, I'm.
That child is stopped.
I'm a fan of equity, not equality.
Well, here's the other thing, too. I mean, I I don't, I prefer to have people in the office, myself. If the council wants to do a day, then I can assure you that that whoever's working from home. They don't answer the phone, or they don't answer messages, or we hear some complaints. That's going to be a problem, because I can tell you, when you try calling the state now and you ask for somebody, you may not get an answer for two weeks.
Been there.
I'm I'm telling you, I have had, I've had, I've asked for information, I have not received information, and you know what I could say? Is anybody working? I call back, is anybody working? I mean, I'd like to know, and that's the thing, you gotta, you gotta have accountability. And when people aren't. Recept, you know, responsive, and it's at the end of the day, when they should have been calling you back an hour later. It's, that's going to be the problem.
Okay, so quick question, you've had that issue with with the town?
No.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just saying is when people work from home, it is a very different situation.
Okay, but I think you get, you you guys may be envisioning everyone working from home. Clerks can't work from home. Police officers, paramedics, public works, transfer station attendants.
Well, how many, how many employees are we talking about?
Uh, less than half dozen.
But they, do they have, they have interaction with the public?
Well, we all have interaction with the.
And I guess that's the question, but that's the thing. If you want to, i- in my opinion, if you want to take it for one day a week and see how it goes. I'm just saying, the minute that we get. Folks that are calling back and saying nobody's being responsive, that's when that's going to end in my, I my book.
So so what I am hearing you say, though, is that. Is that we can change.
One day a week.
Yes, from 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 the equivalent of two days to one day.
Yes.
I'd rather see them there special circumstances. Where, you know, like an appointment or something like that, being in work from home or. Appointment or, I mean, I just, this is a, this is a. Uh, public servant position all along, for a public service position.
Correct.
And you can't serve the public if you're not there, if you're absent.
I don't, uh, not entirely. Like, like when I work from home, Roy, I feel like I'm I'm still serving.
Are you serving people coming into your offices?
Um, usually when I'm at home is because we're closed for a snow day or something, but I'm still serving them.
Yeah, but Anthony, what if we get everybody in town yourself?
It 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 actually is on the website, Andy.
Is it?
I know my business card.
Flexibility or. That's what I heard.
Flexibility for what?
Appointments.
So 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 what I heard was uh, one day specific circumstances. Is that the, okay, okay, so so that's that's the Roy Wayman approach, so it, so does someone, does someone? What I'm asking is, what? Okay, so it's not a matter of that being a part of your schedule, is that one day a week that you work outside the office?
Yeah, or a superintendent.
Okay, I'm I'm sorry, I'm confused.
Schedule one day a week. It's it's only uh, work from home is available if you have special circumstances.
So can we go around the table and and just see sort of, so we can get a sense of where we are on this?
Yeah, I like the one day, I I like the discretion of how that's specific person, so that way, like, more person can make a decision. Like, if it's in the role of you, right, supervisor or major shift, mission, can make the call, and we don't schedule it, yeah, I'm I'm for it.
Yeah, like, I'm going to do that.
I say no scheduled days off and.
Well, I think that's what Zach just said.
If if you get approval from your supervisor or the editor, I think you should have up to one day, no more than one day.
Okay, so.
Talking scheduled or not?
No, well, it wouldn't be.
Like weekly, week after week after week, the same day is that with approval that same day? Or are you talking, I'm, that's not.
That's a loophole. Thing, but I still think. I'd say.
I do see a purpose for it sometimes, right?
Right.
I. I say.
I know where you're standing.
Somebody comes to you, they got a doctor's appointment. Out of town, and it'd be easier for them to work at home, go to the doctor's appointment, go back and break home. I'm okay with that, I don't have a problem.
Okay.
I think I'm in line with that. I think I'd really like to do this. Use, again, I don't need to, I don't micromanage you, you can manage the team when you need to, but I don't want to sit and stand alone something. Somebody is off to a meeting and the kid's going to finish the day, or a doctor's appointment, or a sick child, or that, we all have lives and I get it. And to drive all the way back to the office, doesn't always necessarily make sense, whether they can finish up their day. Uh, of course, it's a one zero away, you know, things kind of mind needs up, I I am in line with that.
Two, one more quick thing with me, I'm not saying even uh, just limit, I'm not saying limited to one day. If you have a sick kid, you sick for a couple of days, I don't have a problem with that. That's a lot left up to your discretion. I'm just saying not scheduled week after week after week.
Okay, so what I'm hearing now is. It's up to the, it's up to the supervisor's discretion, but there has to be extenuating circumstances.
That works.
That's my.
Did you have any?
Well, how do we deal?
Comments regarding any other chapters?
How do we deal with? Um, you know, trying to work from home, taking care of a sick kid, I mean, that works out pretty well, but if you have to actually be in. Portland at a doctor's office, and that's three hours out of your work at home day. Now, what happens to that time?
You claim it as sick time.
Okay, that works.
Right, so out of the other factors, are there any other comments or questions?
Uh, I have a comment about the uh, the meal period, we took out a period plan in in there, it's second twelve. Now, as well, I I just. Use like my work, we we define it like I pay it a half hour, but it's okay, so it's not written here.
Yeah, and I think it's um, um, that's actually going to be one of the things that we're negotiating into collective bargaining agreement. Some employees want an hour, some want thirty minutes.
Is it paid right now?
No.
That's so, you take, so as soon as you take forty-five, you have to come back to shed bench hours.
Yeah, yeah, as long as you get in your full shift.
Following that same chapter with sanctions, um. Yeah.
Just.
We have it. We want to organize something to do that with smoking for public areas.
I think, I think it's just a, I think it's just a state law, right?
No, you weren't, you weren't part of it, we took it in.
We we did do some, but you don't know what it was.
We were part of it, Sarah was charged, and Sarah was here, we had like a thousand dollars for a signage, it was talking about smoking.
Yeah.
On on public property. I just, just trying to make sure that this doesn't conflict of what, something else we have in place, because we talked about this in seventy.
I think we talked about it not, we 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 did not want a public property.
Yeah, we we.
Right, we had that, passed that, we passed that, yeah.
That we also perceive some grant money state, like a thousand dollars or something, or some signage, but I think my understanding was. Yeah, we all just very, very deep the whole day, and did you know when I basically talked about the cemetery, and then when we were talking about rules and regulations? And they stated that, I said, oh, did you state that because we already have an ordinance placed in town, and the cemetery is a public place, and you can't smoke in there.
Yeah, I I remember that.
I don't know if it's an ordinance, it may be a policy, uh, because all all of our ordinance should be listed on our website, and I don't believe that that's one of them.
Do we look into that?
Yeah, we will.
I don't think it may not have been an ordinance, it may have just been something that we decided because.
We decided that, and I thought it was an ordinance, because again, I thought we received some grant money.
Tobacco-free facility policy adopted July eleven twenty twenty-two.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it it wouldn't have been an ordinance.
Of course.
Hey, I'm sorry, what was the name of that policy against?
Town of Windrup tobacco-free facility policy, July eleven twenty twenty-two.
Because we would have had to have a a public hearing on that, we never had that.
Okay, yeah, like we're talking, I mean, I have seen people smoke, and I really. Sure thing, and you can be, you you can stop, right, this is a decision, but I'm restraining, but I'm just not the virtue to. This is more than either our employees, it's not, we already have a law set.
Yeah, and so, and and so as the, my note on there mentioned, the proposed changes are from a uh, policy that the MMA drafted in two thousand twenty-two. And it does uh, say that it's in accordance with the Maine's Workplace Smoking Act of nineteen eighty-five, so it does have some sort of statutory thing.
Yeah. It's got a fifteen and twenty.
Yeah, I'll I'll look at that policy and see how it jives with this.
One question I had on section two. Outside employment.
Oh, I'm glad you brought this up, because I had, I wanted the council's input.
We've obviously had a. Some instances in the past where this has, we've had a common complaint or.
Same camera?
Uh, yeah, or a group piece.
Yeah, very.
Chapter H, section two.
Yeah, so. Uh. I would, there's some. Positions within the statement that uh, have access to some somewhat. Um. Sensible, sensitive or information, meaning. Financial data, bank accounts, all that stuff, and working with other organizations doing. Similar work, I don't necessarily think. But that's. I don't know, I'd rather not see that.
What page are you looking at?
So this was, so uh. So I'm glad you brought this up, Roy, because of all the, in these three chapters of all the provisions in here, this is the section that drew the most, uh, or that sparked the most conversation among the directors of the class. And the, and the line of thinking was twofold. Some folks said, uh, yep, I agree with this, as it's written. Others said, you know what, it's my time. It's none of the town's business what I do in my free time. And so I don't see why I should have to alert my supervisor beforehand. I mean, frankly, I was of the opinion that it's a professional courtesy, uh, if nothing else, but others didn't feel that way. And so it is something I I want to ask the town's attorney about, but I'm also interested in y'all's thoughts.
It's, it's uh. Good job, Duncan, after work, if you need a visit Christmas next year, um, I don't really see an issue with that sort.
But 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 should I, but should I, as the town manager, then have to sort of put you folks on notice that, hey, I'm I'm going to be working with Duncan after my shift?
If it's in the, I I do think so, yeah, if it's another professional position.
But.
Another, what do you mean, a professional position?
Talking, yeah, a situation we've had in the past where we have somebody working for the town of Windrup, and at the same time, working for other communities. Doing the same exact position a lot of times.
We have that, though, with the, with our, with our, we have that right now with our auditor. And auditor on with our, with the contract, yeah.
But so so let me ask you a question, Roy, so in that instance, I know, I know the example that you're talking about. In that instance, if that person were just doing like private bookkeeping on the side, would you have an issue with that?
Uh, for other communities doing.
No, 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 just.
No, as long as it, as long as it was not done between the hours of eight to five, or we're paying that position to be worked.
So so what's your? Okay. But if someone then is working for another municipality doing a similar function. But during off hours. Is that an issue?
Yes. I think that you need to be notified of that.
Okay.
Is it an issue with me? It would be an issue with me, but that's incidentally, I think that you at least need to be aware.
Now, why would you, why would that be an issue? I'm just curious.
Just because I think it's another, well, in the situations in the past that we've.
Because I feel at this point, that count off is my key over there, sir, powers, so then maybe having some of that conversation or accessibility to that kind of the same hours that we need that person within. So.
But if they're, if it's.
Well, under the policy you guys just just uh, directed me to to implement here, uh, that person's going to be in our offices during the, during their conference.
But that's what I'm saying, is like, if if they're in, they have to be here eight to five or whatever it is.
And I just think it's, it's important that we know about it. I think it should be, and then it's, it's clear, it's just transparency, it's what we've been talking about since I've been on the council. I don't, I think it's important, and and we can talk about it, and.
I mean, if as long as they're here when they're supposed to be here, if somebody wants to take a second job, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, they may have to do that for their own financial.
And it's not a matter of can they, it's not a matter of can they do it, it's a matter of should they, a employer.
That's what I'm saying, is it's just sharing.
So so.
Yeah, I think that would be fine.
So for. So, for instance, a, a completely different example, so we have a director who referees youth sports and gets paid for it during his off hours, is that something that he should alert the town manager about?
I don't think that's any of our business.
I think it's only something that aligns with the, the current role of their end.
Okay.
That's what I mean by professional, the same professional position.
Like a concept of interest?
Yeah, exactly.
It may not be a con, but it's still having a discussion about it.
It's pretty good, if you're up the game, you sit down at your computer, uh, on a Saturday afternoon, but it's also, it's, it's a little bit easier to log into another, say, municipalities work, or whatever, and, and do a few things while you're sitting at your desk on, on a Wednesday.
So, so am I understanding correctly, is the main concern just about someone doing work for other municipalities similar to the work that they do for us?
That's correct.
Similar position.
But, but, but if it's in the private sector, not, not, not an issue as far as y'all are concerned?
That's correct.
Okay.
I think it's fine, we hear that it says that they would let them know, the department director or the town manager in advance of taking such a plan.
Yeah, well, it's written now, I think it's what you guys want, right?
I think that's fine.
Okay.
I just want to take it clearly.
So, no.
Okay. Oh, you weren't adequate?
No, no, I was making sure I was reading it.
Oh, yeah, 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 I read it.
Well, I think, I think there probably should be this added language, just for clarity's sake.
Yeah, that's fine.
And, and again, it's not a matter of asking permission, but if, 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 if the, if the boss, if the boss says, oh, I have an issue with that, because I think it's gonna be a conflict with, with your role here with the town, then, then, then hard decisions might have to be.
Maybe you have a plot, or you're taking another job in another town, and you spot a smell, and you can call him, he's getting coming to work, he's following the town, and just go to smell what's up. And I think that's a decision that, that the local board.
Well, yeah, at that, in that situation, that's a little different.
That's all I'm saying, it's just to let you know.
Yeah, that's fine.
No?
No.
Okay.
Thank you, Anthony, I appreciate that, yeah.
All right, Anthony, you ready to go?
No, so what I'm gonna do now is present these, make some changes here, present them to the town's attorney, so that he can vet them and then bring it back to you, but the next meeting, we may have chapter six back with the changes that Zach suggested, and that, and that, I mean, at least we'll get that, that, uh, chapter.
Thanks, we'll move on to the one, the one, the consideration of council committee appointments for application chairs, appointments to finance, and appointments to committees.
So moved.
Any discussions?
I just wanna make sure that you're comfortable with it or not.
I'm good.
It's going around here, it's good, it's a good problem.
I suppose, in the nature of.
That's it, it's good.
Full disclosure, everyone should know that I have a niece that serves on the planning board.
Noted.
That's a problem, maybe we can work and switch or something.
Well, no, you just, you just don't, you just abstain from the vote.
I don't, we don't vote anyway.
Any, any appointments?
Anybody's got any questions, they can ask questions.
Yeah, well, good, just, it's the way I always operate, you put that stuff out there, and then.
This is consideration of town council liaison to the town committees, and so we can discuss this, if there's any concerns, or if anyone wants to switch to a different committee.
Yeah, so, so, um, councillor Burns previously was the liaison to the conservation commission, and asked Zach if he might have any interest in that, cause he could just slide right into that role.
Yeah, I, I thought it was easiest stuff to shake everything out, you guys have still, you know, they shed, yes.
Again, unless someone else wants to, to fill a different role.
I'm drawing that one. And, and am I accurate, uh, with assuming that the zone board of appeals has not had a meeting in quite some time?
They have not, you lucky dog.
Um, I, I haven't heard anything from Paul, I haven't heard anything from Paul about the police.
Uh, we haven't had a meeting in that.
Okay.
Do you wanna have, um, the police consolidation, that was, from this?
Oh, onto the, oh, uh-huh.
So I'll just read out through, the cemetery committee, James Steele, conservation commission, Zach Steele, planning board, Andy West, recreation committee, Eric White, the revitalization committee, Shannon McDonal, the zoning board of appeals, Roy Wayman, and police consolidation at Hawk Ridge, where they were.
So moved.
Sir, a second.
Um, I'll second one of those.
Discussion, okay.
See it off air, and just, it just jumped over that, man. School.
That's not a.
That's not really a question.
Okay, we.
That's an elective committee.
I understand, but I take, when I, when I first came in, going back to Chanel yesterday, when I came here, I believe it was somebody who was, so Elizabeth, nineteen, nineteen.
Yeah, I mean, they did it kind of, it, that wasn't appointed, they just did it.
I, I didn't wanna make sure that.
I think.
I'm just wanna make sure, I wanna have somebody go there, just to this community represented, and also, to go to that meetings, just.
I would pray to all councilors, so.
You just.
Well, I, yeah, I saw, I mean, I just, I know we want somebody. I'm good with it.
You just drop down to twelve.
Twelve?
You, when you started running off those names?
Yeah, we're on item twelve.
Yeah, so I thought, can you run that one by me again? It's not fast enough.
Cemetery committee is James Steele, conservation commission is Zach Steele, planning board is you, Andy, recreation committee is Eric White, villain revitalization committee is myself, Shannon McDonal, zoning board of appeals is Roy Wayman, and police consolidation at Hawk Ridge is Wendy Foker. And that was also in your.
No, not the right old bag.
There you go, all right, so there's a motion to adjourn on paper.
Okay.
All in favor, thank you, all right, we'll move on to item fifteen, consideration of the trust and warrants.
You threw the disver- disparate warrants as presented.
Second.
All in, any discussion? All in favor? All in favor, thank you, the item fourteen, consideration of restorations from the appointments committee.
Uh, I'm sure there'd be any appoints.
None. All right, we will move on to, other than that, so I'll open another public comment, if there's anyone who'd like to leave a letter in the audience, I would love you to speak up.
I had. I asked, has had.
No. Just the other.
I think it's true.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
All right, we will move on to the county managers' report.
So we are right now in the midst of working on the FY twenty-six budget, and so far we've got several, uh, departmental budgets already done, but, uh, one of the things that I've taken an interest in this year is just ensuring that we have a sound methodology for how we determine how all of the communities that use the Winthrop ambulance service and the dispatch center are paying their fair share. And, uh, I, I've always had this sneaking suspicion that, um, that local taxpayers were subsidizing service in other communities, and as we've, uh, implemented what I think is a sound methodology, again, based upon, uh, a model that is used right now by the city of Gardner for its ambulance service, we find that that is probably, in fact, the case. And it's, uh, and it's the case to a fairly large extent, so large that, uh, passing those costs to the other towns immediately would probably, um, uh, cripple them financially.
And that's for the ambulance.
And the dispatch center, and so.
I ask that question every single year, every single year. I asked, what was the, what was the, what was the surrounding towns and what they were paying, and what the average, oh, God, oh my, all right.
So, uh, to clear today, I sent an email to the town managers in those eight other communities, uh, to come and meet with us to, so that we can come up with a plan for how we can ensure that moving for, that all the towns are, uh, paying their fair share of the public service that they're receiving. And if they have a better idea for methodology, we're all ears, uh, if they have an idea for, we can sort of, uh, transition their total cost to them over a short number of years, you know, I'd be interested in hearing what their, what their thoughts are uh, for that, so, anyway, just wanted to let you guys know that we are working on that, and which I'd rather not say, uh, simply because there are some communities that would gag if we just immediately, uh, said, okay, here's your bill, you know, and it would, it would be a hardship for them financially, uh, but we are committed to moving that way in a short number of years.
Yeah, because, as a member of the community, as a taxpayer, it makes me wanna get here.
I, I don't, I don't disagree.
We asked for that information, I can't tell you how many years in a row.
Yeah, well, once we've had the meeting with the town managers, I'll show you, and you can see if you think it's, it's sound, I, I believe that it is.
You already sent out an email about how we're going, but, but I haven't seen any numbers.
Right, yeah, you, so you saw the model, the Gardner model, that I sent you. Yeah, and for the ambulance service is based on three factors, it's based on population, it's based on usage, so a three, a three-year average of how many calls in each community, and then it's based on uncollectibles, so we all know that there's a certain amount of calls that they make, that we're never gonna see any revenue for.
We've eaten all those.
And we've eaten all those in the past, and so now, you know, we're gonna be asking communities to cover, you know, their uncollectibles as well, so, um, uh, and then with the dispatch, it's a simpler formula, because there's no revenue generated there, other than the town subsidy, so it's just a matter of population and usage.
All right.
So, um, at the next meeting, we will be hearing from some groups with their special request, groups like the, uh, uh, the historical society, and, uh, the friends of Colossi, so just know that that'll be sort of your first rattle out of the box, when it comes to the budget, you'll, you'll hear from them, and, and what they're asking for, and why. Um, the feb-, the second February meeting actually falls on President's Day. So, uh, here are three potential, and I'm not gonna be here the week of February the twenty-fourth, so here are three potential options for the second meeting in February. We could have it a week earlier, which is February the tenth. We could have it on President's Day, so I don't mind coming up here that evening and opening up the office and going ahead and having a meeting.
Regular work, but.
I know.
I want it.
Or, or we could have it the next day on February the eighteenth, so I'm just, uh, whichever, whichever of those that you folks prefer, I'm, I'm getting.
I'm coming back from someplace, I may not be here, so, depends.
I don't think I'll be here.
So, I mean.
For, somebody said that.
Oh, you won't, would, would you be here the next day?
Next day I'd be here, but.
That weekend, we don't.
Oh.
I'll be here the eighteen, but.
I will not be here.
Do you wanna do the tenth? Let's just do the tenth.
All right.
The tenth.
Three weeks.
Yeah, three weeks in a row, woo-hoo.
Make them quick.
Yeah, okay, very good. I'll, I'll send a reminder to everyone via email. Um, if you're interested in, uh, breakfast on seven thirty AM on February the twelfth, and you'd like to hear an enchanting presentation to the, uh, Winthrop Lakes Chamber of Commerce by your town manager, you're hereby invited. And, uh, and so earlier today, I sent you guys, uh, an email that we're getting on a weekly basis last week from the, uh, MMA, and I would just, uh, encourage you to, to take a look at those emails, there's some interesting information in that weekly message. While the legislature is in session about things that are really pertinent to us, and in fact, the lead article for the one I sent you earlier today is general assistance, so, something that's heavy on the office.
Andy's enchanting breakfast free?
Hmm, I don't know. I'll tell you what, Andy, if it's not, I'll treat you how's that.
Now I gotta go.
So, that's my.
What was the date on that? I gotta write that.
The twelfth.
Where, uh?
Oh, at the, uh, the mill, at the, uh, their, their meeting room there, uh, next to the, uh, the new bagel shop.
Yep.
I'll be there.
A little bit.
Free breakfast.
Yeah.
We're on the free lunches.
All right, uh, any comments on the council?
Nope.
All right. If, uh, we turned, well, we're going to move into exactly the session, one and a half.